Okay, I would like to call our regular Board of Education meeting to order. And this evening, if I could have members of our middle school student congress come up, please. We are lucky enough to have three members of the middle school stu-- oh, all the way up, so you can stand in front of me, so you can see the care, you got smiling faces to the camera. Mrs. Jar, you get right in here with them. Okay, we have with us this evening Tristan Riggs, who is president of Student Council, Mia Morgan, who is the secretary, and Bryce Germain. And we have also with us Mrs. Cheryl Jar, who is the Student Council advisor. And we are very glad to have them with us this evening. The kids told me before we started, they've been pretty busy since school started. They took care of homecoming Spirit Week events at the middle school back in October. They have a pumpkin painting contest that they have going on for the fifth and sixth grade. And in November, they have a dance coming up for the seventh and eighth grade. So they have been doing a whole lot of things at the middle school, and we are really appreciative of all that they're doing. So at this time, if we could all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. And guys, if you want to turn around and face the flag, and when you're ready, we're ready.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Thank you, guys, well done. Okay, next is our mission statement. Bridgette?
At Richmond Community Schools, we provide a quality education and empower students to be successful in the global community. Tracy?
Here.
Sarah?
Here.
Dan?
Here.
Margaret?
Here.
I am here, we have a forum.
And Jeff and Chris are absent with notice. Next would be approval of the agenda. A motion would be in order to approve the agenda as presented?
It's been moved.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next is our consent agenda, which includes a personnel report. A motion would be in order to approve the consent agenda items, including the personnel report. Thank you.
Support?
Thank you. It's been moved and supported. Brian?
There is nobody here. The two people in the personnel report are regarding the childcare, after-school childcare due to an increase enrollment. Lisa Rans was a former employee. She resigned for conflict with her schedule, and these hours fit with her schedule, so we're happy to have her back. And then the second person, and I know I'm going to goof up the names on her--
Shelby Chig Fry.
Thank you. I'm very excited.
Just to help you with that name.
She's excited, work fits into her schedule, and between the two of them, they'll cover that after-school program, so I'm excited to have them on board.
And Shelby is a Richmond grad, recent Richmond grad, so that is exciting to have her part of the childcare. Okay, it has been moved and supported. All those in favor? Oh, wait, I'm sorry, is there any discussion on the motion? Sorry. I saw the look on your face, Trace.
I was ready to say.
Okay, all right. It has been moved and supported. Any discussion, others? Okay, hearing none? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Next, superintendent and legislative update.
We have a couple exciting athletic events happening. We have our Richmond Boys Soccer, who are district champs and are moving on. We also have our varsity football team, who are the co-champs of the BWAC, and will be playing, will be hosting the district this Friday night at 7:00. So I want to congratulate them and wish them good luck. Today, we have some sad news across the state. Our state superintendent, Brian Winston, his son was killed in an automobile accident today, so I send our prayers to him and his family during this time. Some of the legislative updates. Last week, the House passed a road funding bill. There is a lot of uncertainty with this because it relies on the future legislators to come up with the funds that are needed. It diverts about $806 million from the state's $10 billion general fund money, which is, we're all looking where they're going to divert that money from to pay for this, so that's to be determined. So we're expected, the Senate will pass either a similar or a substitute bill, and then it will go into conferencing to see if they can pass one. The goal is to have a road package bill passed by November, or, excuse me, Thanksgiving. Our concern from the public school is to make sure that's not on the backs of the school aid fund, which should be for the schools. There is a House School Aid Subcommittee that will hear presentations on the Detroit Public School budget, and if you haven't heard, in essence, the proposal that's out there is to have the current debt of Detroit Public Schools, which is primarily from, well, it was under the oversight of emergency financial managers, but that debt to remain and create a new school district for the Detroit Public Schools, which would then receive the state aid money, so taking money from the state aid. It's an interesting concept, but it leads to what will happen when the next district has an excessive debt amount and so forth. So it's a solution that the students in Detroit need, and they need it for their own education, but I think there's a better picture that we need to look at, a bigger picture we need to look at. I guess good news from the federal government recently. It was reported in the Detroit, excuse me, the New York Times, that the current president, President Obama, is that we have gone too far as a federal level in the amount of required testing, so that's a good sign from the federal government to focus on reducing the amount of testing. One of the plans is that no more than 2% of the classroom instruction is for testing. As you know, we took the recent MyStep last year to be in compliance with No Child Left Behind. That was several hours of instruct-- or testing for our students, which I'm hopefully that they will get, will get the results soon. We're still waiting on them, so. Other than that, I think that is it for me.
Okay. Next is items of interest from members of the board. Does anyone have anything? Sarah does.
I was able to attend the Michigan Association of School Boards conference this week, and that was a really good opportunity for me to learn a little bit, since I'm new on the board, about the school boards, and it was really good to see all the members of the school boards throughout Michigan, and I thought it was a really good opportunity. So I just wanted to mention that I was there, and I learned a lot, and hopefully I can bring it back to here, and it could help me be a better board member.
And Sarah went and took the 101 class, the school board 101, so.
Who taught it?
Mary.
Yeah.
She was really good. Yes. She was awesome.
She is, and so we appreciate that you went and did that, too, as a board. Thank you.
Sure. I would just have, all of us, I know, you know, we can have bad days at work, or bad days teaching, or bad days, but at least in this district, our children have drinkable water. They have water that they can drink. And Flint Community Schools does not, yet. They're still waiting. So I would just ask that all of us think about them and think about those kids who, for a year now, have had lead tainted water to be drinking at home and also at school. The last I knew, there were filters that had been delivered, and so all of the schools, think of all of the places that those schools are going to have to put those filters, so that the kids can be having water that's drinkable and safe for them. So even in our worst moments, we don't have that going on, and that's a good thing, but let's think about them and offer them support when we can.
I just want to say, last Thursday, I got the opportunity to go to Lee Elementary to pick up my daughter. She was sick, and I walked into the office, and just, you could tell that it was a very positive feeling when you walked into the office. There was a bunch of children singing, surrounding the office and singing the 12 Days of Halloween, and you could just totally see on their faces the joy and the laughter, and I want to give a shout out to Mrs. Hall for doing that. I also, I couldn't attend the Monster Bash, but I heard it was a fabulous, fabulous time, and I want to say, I really appreciate all the teachers that came to that. My husband came home, and he's like, gosh, it's really unusual, all these teachers were there, and that is very, very special about this community, because you don't get that a lot of places, and I hear it was fabulous. And the last thing, on, two weeks ago, my daughter and a bunch of her friends had a cheer competition, and a teacher, out of her time on Saturday, came to watch that competition, Mrs. Worth. So I just want to say thank you, and just to recognize the dedication that we have here in this community, and I appreciate it.
Thank you. Anybody else? I just asking board members, I know that we got the email about the forum that's happening Thursday at Frazier, it's Frazier High School, correct?
Correct, in the auditorium.
Right, everybody got that?
Is it a--
It's a--
Local.
I believe, Mrs. Ranger, did you send it out to everybody, correct?
Oh, yes, yeah.
Okay, okay. So I don't know, I'm still trying to think that I'm going to be able to go, and I just didn't know if anybody else was interested in attending it. So if you were, we can talk and see if we can go there, but I know that, I think it will be interesting, and supposedly there are going to be some politicians, representatives that might possibly be there to speak, so that could always be entertaining as well to hear about how they think education is most likely to succeed, but, so if, well, it could be entertaining. So if anyone else is interested or thinks that they can make it, let me know, because I'm pretty sure I'm going to be able to get there. Okay? Anybody else? Okay. Next is public comment. It's the part of the meeting we have, where if anyone would like to address the board, they may. Can come up to the podium, state your name. You have three minutes to speak. It is not a question and answer session with the board, but if there's a question that you would like answered, you can leave your name and phone number on the card, and someone will get back with you. Is there anyone who would like to address the board?
I don't really have a question, I just have a comment. My name is Teresa Ranger, I teach first grade at the Elementary School. I was at the Monster Bash, and I just want to say a huge shout out to the PTO. They do so many things behind the scenes that people don't realize, getting the book fair organized, getting the raffle baskets. There was, I think, Mr. Manguni would probably know, 35 raffle baskets, that someone had to pound the pavement to get people to donate, and it went off without a hitch. There was, you know, there was teacher help, there was parent help, but the PTO needs, I mean, I think they deserve the recognition. It was a fun time. My grandkids were there, and they had a great time, but, and it was, it was a big crowd, so I just wanted to say thanks.
Anyone else? Let me move on to bond update. Brian?
Working with our business manager, Vicki, regarding where we are from the bond perspective of closing out projects, finishing, where we are with our fund. As I've mentioned previously, several times, the items that were out to bid came in under budget, which is a good thing for the district. There were things that came up as unexpected costs, as we've had many conversations regarding, as you go through and start opening up walls, or things weren't necessarily on the drawings that we need to be there, for a variety of reasons. So what you have in front of you is, if you look on the first part, you'll see a series of vendors on the left side. I'll just begin with Boom Construction Efficient Design, and it kind of gives a description of what they did in the district, and then their contract amount, and if you look to the far right, how much is completed? Most of the construction is completed. There are two major, really, really, one major, one that we still have not paid much of the bill for, and that's regarding the mechanical heating and cooling. There's some issues that have not yet been closed out. Hendrick Construction is coming back on Wednesday to walk through again with me on that stuff that's supposed to be completed, and so forth. As you get to the bottom of that page one, and the copier, cut this off, but on the left side, that's supposed to be furnishings, there is an amount budgeted for us to look at furnishings in the building. We have a group that's getting together tomorrow. I think it's three teachers per building and the administrative principal, and we're going to talk about the furniture needs of the building, looking at furniture in terms of multifunctional, so it's not necessarily a desk that we may be looking at. So that's for that. So that's allocated, but it hasn't yet necessarily been encumbered. There's been some furnishings that have come out of that. When you look, continue on the left side on page two, you'll start seeing, again, I apologize for it being cut off, you'll see the security, which is PCT Security, Delta, some of the phone system, computer and video upgrades. You'll see some of that is complete according to what the bond scope called for. I'll give you an example, and when we were looking at the camera system, there were some pockets that, once the cameras were in, still created some blind spots in the district, so we did a change order to get additional cameras in there, so we were covered with what the intent was. As you go down towards the bottom, you'll start seeing the, what's listed as iPads, which is what the line item was, but it's really all the technology for the teachers, the students, the cases that we purchased for all the laptops, and you'll see, most of that, we are closing out those bills because we are in receipt of all of those items. When you get to the bottom of page two, you'll see bond cost, attorney fees, these are all the other associated costs with the bond that, you obviously want to make sure, we're crossing our Ts and dotting our Is with the state. Advertising requirements for the bond. General conditions such as abatement, if it required abatement, you know, dumpsters, temporary protections, like when they pulled out the windows, we had the plastic sheeting that went up over the windows to protect the stuff of the cold and weather from getting inside the building. So as you look to the bottom of page three, you'll see a subtotal line that's darkened in black. You'll see right below it what will be called contingency. This is where we are, that is our total dollar amount, it's $958,000 of contingency that we budgeted for, in case something came up that we did not need. That $958,000 is broken up into several categories, which are listed right below it. The first one is the technology. All of the technology improvements we made, the bidding out of the laptops, the infrastructure, came in $211,000 under budget, just in the technology aspect alone. From the technology contingency, so for instance, if we budgeted $1,000 and we held 10% contingency in case things came up, we're holding another $100. Well, that's the amount that we held for contingency, another $208,000 in technology. And so the third line is the construction. When you look at all the stuff on the first page, after we've processed almost all of our change orders, we are still left with about $538,000 of contingency from the construction aspect. So where we are as an organization is to begin prioritizing the next level of improvements that, I don't want to call it a wish list, because none of this bond was a wish, it's had to be really, especially the construction aspect, it was long overdue in many cases. Prioritizing what that last remaining dollar amount would be spent on. One of the things that we're looking at, when we look at the furnishing, I'm anticipating that budget for furnishing, depending on the surface that we look at, tables in classrooms, I know the middle school is in need of chairs. Many of the chairs are beginning, the plastic is beginning to crack, and they can't be fixed. You can fix the metal, you can solder them back, but the actual plastic chairs, there's several that are cracking that are, they're temporarily being fixed right now. So when we look at that, I anticipate that being a little higher than what we budgeted. One of the questions that came out in the discussion regarding the copiers from last time, I did get a email from the attorney today through Troon, if we were to outright purchase the copiers, that is a qual, that can fall within the bond, so I do have that in writing. That's part of the reason why I took that item off the agenda, so I can look, begin looking at both options to consider from a cost perspective. I do want to preference, the numbers you have here, though Vicki and I are pretty close that where, this is where we're at, you know, we have to sit down with Hendrick and finalize it, so we may be off a little. I don't anticipate a lot being off from this dollar amount. So one of the things that I began doing is beginning, looking at what are the areas of the organization that did not get touched or needs to get fixed, and I'll give you an example. None of the roof repairs were done over the auditorium or the lobby, and if you go into the lobby of the auditorium, you'll see on the west entrance, there's been a leak at some point, because the drywall is damaged up at that. None of that got fixed in the bond. That's one of the things that I want to look at, is what does it take to get that fixed long-term, whether it's window replacement, I'm not talking full scale, but it might be just need caulking, it might need something that needs to be. Where the auditorium and the main hallway meet in the high school, there is a constant leak that we have not found the location of that leak. You know, as you know, when water gets in, it travels to the lowest point, and it could be a far-off spot that it's leaking into, but there is a leak that we got to fix. None of that was part of the bond scope when we looked at patching, either replacing the roof or patching part of the roof. There are concerns with some of the heating, or the air conditioning units that are on the building. The one in particular that comes to mind is the one that's at Lee Elementary School in the computer lab. Oftentimes, that air conditioning unit is down, and the repairs are starting to become very costly to continue to repair it. So where I guess I'm, I'm starting is to begin compiling that list of considerations of where we want to put stuff together. I did do a walkthrough today with the high school principal, Ms. Michonne, who, we went through every classroom, every bathroom, every inch of the building, and started making a list of everything that wasn't part of the bond, or it might have been part of the bond, but one of these vendors hasn't finished the punch list. So this is where we are from a financial, of what we have unspent, things that came in under budget. When you're looking at making that next set of lists, and that's one of the things that I am working on, is what, in the bond process, there was a process of identifying what needs to be fixed, and when you got that wish list, I'm sure it was scaled down at some point because you couldn't do everything. Finding that list or developing that second list, so that it's got to stay within the scope of the bond. We can't change, we can't do improvements that aren't in the scope of what we submitted to the treasury or that the voters approved.
So, so everyone here knows, part of my questions to Brian about the print solution and all of that, when I met with him was, why would we want to take this out of general fund Monday, money that could come from the bond? And so I started the conversation of how we have not, we have not talked about what the, what that extra money, and that's not the right word.
It's not, yeah.
That's not the right word, but the unused money. And my interest sparked when the audit, Mike Frawley was here, when he talked about going to the state and doing your bond audit, and I thought, we're two years from when we did this, that we really need to get to a point where, what do we have left? So that, that kind of came about with the conversation with Brian and what Brian's doing, and in my thought, and to ask the rest of the board, I really think it's something that we need to be looking at by the end of the year, and I'm talking the end of 2015. You know, putting something together and sitting down, you know, he's going to, he's working with the administrators and that, but I think it's something that we need to sit down, all of them and all of us, and really talk about where we're at and where we're going to go with the unused money. So I don't know what anyone else thinks, but that's, that's where my vision was going when I talked to Brian about the printer stuff. And I did ask him, too, about the bathroom, the three bathroom situations.
Oh, yes. There was, in my weekly communication to you, at one point, I had reported, because we had several restaurants where either a toilet was turned off because it wasn't working, or primarily like insulating the pipes, that's a requirement of the OCR visit that we had, all the bathroom pipe. Those mechanical and plumbing would be, could be charged to the bond from that perspective of the plumbing aspect of the bond.
I mean, I just remember that the process, when it all began, far and long ago that was. There was that idea of priority, these are, these are things that just have to be done, and then these are things that we would really like to have, depending on financially how it all goes, and I remember seeing that, and Dale Jerome might have been here with us at some point, and having that. So knowing that there's something out there already that was done a couple years ago, and I know that, you know, that list may have changed and morphed, because you, you know, Brian, you weren't with us at that point, it was, you know, Dr. Olson, so it seems like the sooner the better, those kinds of decisions, so that we can make sure that we're communicating to the public clearly about what's going on with that money, and the sooner the better that needs to happen.
So I think you're absolutely right. So shall we direct, Brian, that we would like to see something by December meeting, whether it's a matter of what he's working with, with administrators, and be able to sit down at our meeting? Because I think, I think it needs to be, we need to say we'd like it by this time, so that he knows where we need to go.
Does that seem like a fair time, Chris?
Oh, it is, I think, because, as, once we, I think, from my belief, our three building administrators have a very good sense from working with their staff on things that are still problematic in the organization, as well as now in our restructuring, and some of my roles as being much more on the non-instructional, the building side, I'm becoming much more aware of things that are, so that list, I think we're going to get to a point where we're going to have to prioritize, because there's still not going to be enough money.
Right, sure.
But, you know, it's something long-term, we need to think about what's their biggest bang for our buck, if you will, but I think December would be reasonable.
If I remember, because it was a long time ago, but the next set--
Of bonds, right?
There's, there's a bond series that's released, about 900,000, 990,000, Vicki, is it 990?
Yes.
In about two years?
Less.
A little less than two years.
A little less than that, isn't it? Or is it two years?
Eighteen.
Eighteen?
Yep.
Okay. And that's a specific focus, is there specific focus for buses?
We have, we have currently in the bond that we've released, there is a purchase of another bus, and then on here, though the details underneath each lineup, there's a lineup to purchase another bus, I think it's next school year, which would be the 16, 17, or it might be the 17, 18 school year for that school year. There's one more bus to be purchased, and that's already budgeted for.
Oh.
But that's 900,000 is more of a technology. That 900,000 is more of a technology. Think about--
Is that technology?
That's a technology. So in thinking long-term, we've now purchased 1,500 laptops. At some point, that technology's going to be obsolete or need to be replaced, and that's part of what that technology--
Right, that's, I know that's why we made that choice, to do that. I just wasn't sure how, where that money was pointed, because I remembered buses, and I remembered technology, and I couldn't remember if it was just one or both, or where that was for that next set.
There is, there is a bus yet to be purchased. We have, I think, there's 100, 1.4 million in the bank from the bonds that have been sold. Of that one point, about 900 is left to be reallocated based on things coming in under budget, and we have about 500, 600,000 of bills that yet to be paid as we're processing, going through this. But they've already been, the work's already been done, it's just now paying the bills.
Right, okay.
Which gets us down to that 9, 958 number.
Good?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Okay, next, action items, second reading-- Okay, next, action items, second reading of our board policy. These are policies that we discussed two weeks ago, with the exception, this is, this is the administrative staff, not, not the school board ones.
Yeah, the board policy 1040 for membership and duties. When Margaret and I met regarding setting the agenda, I said I was still trying to pull the information of what was discussed previously. So we've done the first reading, I've got the input. These two will come back to at a later point for a second reading with that information I was able to gather.
We can do a second reading on them at any time. We don't have to do them this time. So that's why the school board ones aren't in. It's just these that we're going to approve for a second reading. So I would assume, and tell me if I'm assuming incorrectly, but is there anyone that has anything with any of these, the changes that we made, that kind of stuff? Is there any issues anyone has with any of them?
No, I was just, definition of family, that was, that we had a discussion about that.
That's, that's the board stuff, yes.
Yes, yes.
All right, so then no.
Okay.
I'm good.
Okay, then I would look for a motion, there's a sample resolution.
A motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the attached revised board policies as presented on October 12, 2015, for a first reading, and October 26, 2015, for a second reading. Support.
Okay, it's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Post, motion carries. Okay, next, we have the approval of the Teamsters Local 214 Paraprofessional Contract. Brian?
In your backup, you have the contract for the paraprofessionals. It is a one-year extension of what was previously. As you look in the backup, most of the language changes occurred when we approved the contract this past year. The only change would be in Article 24, the insurance protection. It redefined offering a single subscriber health care. Currently, our paraprofessionals are part-time, none of them are full-time. What it does allow the district to do is if it requires us to make a full-time position due to a variety of reasons, we may have, if it's a special education, we have a special need where it's better for the student to have someone there all day rather than two different people, it's a significant savings what they have offered us based on their previous language. So when you look at the total contract, though, it's not costing us anymore, it positions us in a better, a better spot should we need to have, offer that to a member. And then the last thing is just on the Article 25, which is the compensation. They, we've agreed to a freeze this year, and no, but it just changes the date in that section. So that's the paraprof.
Okay, thank you. There's a sample resolution?
A motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the master agreement between Richmond Community Schools Board of Education and Educational Paraprofessional Teamsters State County and Municipal Workers Local 214, effective October 26, 2015 through June 30, 2016.
Okay. Excuse me, it's been moved and supported. Any discussion?
I appreciate. And just as a side note, this process we went through, because we did go through mediation with this, it's really about not, you know, when you look at getting to a position like with an emergency financing matter where they can just wipe out contract, this process really went through the way it was intended to go through, getting both sides in there, talking about it. So kudos to the parapros who were sitting there and going through this process, because they represented about 15 to 16 members in our organization.
Okay. I'm going to do a roll call vote. Tracy?
Aye.
Sarah?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Bridgette?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Motion carries. Next, approval of Teamsters Local 214 Transportation Contract. Brian?
Not that I'm showing any favoritism to any group, but I do want to thank this group because I can present to you a contract that brings every one of the members back to Richmond Community Schools and eliminates a third party, utilizing a third party. With that, it's a three-year contract. The cost analysis, as I shared, or as I provided you, when you look at the total cost of the contract over the next three years, is really no more than what we're currently paying on the contract, but yet allows them in year two and year three to have a raise provided. This group has not had a raise in several years. I want to say three, four years ago when 2% was given across the board. This group did not receive that raise, so it does build that into it. But what they've done is really, and I give them, I give the bargaining team with the Teamsters and Sue who represented the transportation, a lot of credit because we sat there and worked really creative on looking at what are you trying to do in the contract is, you know, ultimately put more money on the table from their take-home pay. And so we were very creative on looking at existing contract language that was limited to certain members, rethinking personal leave time and the amount of days they were allocated, looking at, well, how many days do you actually use on a normal employee? So the numbers, by reducing that, it reduces our costs for subs, et cetera. So, you know, this, this contract is a three-year contract, and I'm very proud to say that through the work with them and my team, that we can bring them back as Richmond employees. The intent is to bring them by the beginning of next school year because we have to give notice to our current Mets provider that we are going to end that relationship with them. But I'm very happy for this one, for the district.
Thank you. There's a sample resolution?
A motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the master agreement to Richmond Community Schools Board of Education and Transportation Teamsters State County and Municipal Workers Local 214, effective October 26, 2015 through June 30, 2018. Support.
Okay, it's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? I just want to, on behalf of the board, to thank Brian for the hard work in getting this contract to happen. It was extremely important for the board that the transportation employees came back to being Richmond school employees and were not with a third party anymore. That was very important to us, and obviously, it was very important to those workers as well. So we truly appreciate Brian's efforts and the transportation. It takes a lot to sit down and go through your contract and give up some things, but to ultimately, it's a win-win for both sides, and that's huge for us. And we are very excited to be able to approve this contract. So thank you, and thank you to our transportation employees. Anyone else? I'm going to do a roll call. Bridgette?
Aye.
Sarah?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Motion carries. Next, looking for a closed session to, for student discipline hearing discussion.
So moved.
Okay, it's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Do a roll call. Dan?
Aye.
Bridgette?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Sarah?
Aye.
And I vote aye. It is 8:24, so we are back in open session. And we have a motion from our closed session. Tracy?
A motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and reinstating students 102615, further reinstatement hearing conducted on August 24, 2015, on a reduced schedule as determined by the superintendent of schools, effective immediately. The superintendent of schools shall also determine the appropriate off-site educational setting and course of study for student 102615. Should the parent or guardian of the student 102615 not agree with the terms of reinstatement, the board reinstatement shall be voided.
Support. I'll go with Bridgette. You're really rocking your scissors. Okay. It has been moved and supported. Is there any discussion?
Both of us, too.
Hearing none, I'll do a roll call. Tracy?
Aye.
Bridgette?
Aye.
Sarah?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
I vote aye. Motion carries, and we are adjourned at 8:25.